Good evening. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the May 28th, 2019 School Board Meeting to order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased that you took the time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mrs. McDougal.
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
Present.
Please join us for a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of Tim English, a member of our Facility Services Team. Thank you. Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. McDougal, would you like to start us off?
It's been a busy week. I want to say first, since our last Board meeting, we had the Merritt Island Community Listen-In or Town Hall with Dr. Mullins. I also was able to visit Golf View and present a few of the award pins, and that was very moving. It was a very nice thing I could do. And then I went to Emma Jewell, and Emma Jewell is my charter school, and I did the same thing there, and the teachers were very appreciative, and they were surprised that I included them as I'm being a charter school, and I could see no reason why I wouldn't include them. I also went ahead and went to the Rookie of the Year Award at Freedom 7, and it was for the, I wish I could remember the name, the counselor there, and it was nice to see that it was given to a counselor, a person after my own heart. And then we had lots of graduations. So it was fun to go to Merritt Island, Edgewood, Cocoa, and Emma Jewell, all very different, but all very well-attended. And if the class of 2019 is anything, if all our future classes are like that, I think there's great hope for our country and for the world. They were amazing students, and thanks to the students, but also thanks to the teachers who got them to where they are. So it was wonderful to go to the graduations.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Ms. Belford.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. So I had the opportunity this morning to kick off my day with Space Coast Junior/Senior High School with just a handful of great things going on there this morning. They had an 8:00 AM staff meeting, and we started off the staff meeting with celebrating their Emerging Teacher of the Year. So for those of you who may not be familiar, our Emerging Teacher of the Year is a second year teacher that is just really showing great promise and having great impact at the school. And so Molly Forbes is our Emerging Teacher of the Year for the district and happens to be a teacher at Space Coast Junior/Senior. Phenomenal energy, I can certainly see why she was chosen. Also, Francine Drabich was recognized this morning at Space Coast Junior/Senior for being our Social Studies Teacher of the Year, and so she now will go on and compete with other district's social studies teachers to potentially be a state social studies teacher of the year, so congratulations to her. I also was able to recognize three of their team members with our pins. All three received the Bridge Builder Award, and all really around just going above and beyond to support students, make connections for students, develop relationships with students and with parents, and making connections with community organizations to provide support. So congratulations to McKenna Diesel, Ashley Moore, and Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark, by the way, is their social worker. I know we've had lots of feedback about the importance of social workers in schools, and Ashley Moore is their guidance. Ms. M., give me her, what's her official title?
Guidance Clerk.
Guidance Clerk. And both of them have really gone out of their way to make that connection. And then McKenna Diesel, interestingly enough, she is a science teacher at Space Coast, and I left there and went to two other schools to do recognitions, and before I could get back to my house to post recognition on Facebook, she had already posted that she had received the pin, and she had a picture of the card, and she was talking about the fact that she truly loves teaching science, but what really means the most to her is building those relationships with our students. So it was great to see that enthusiasm. When I left there, I went over to Challenger 7, and Ms. Carol Lee Webb, who is a second grade teacher at Challenger 7, I had, I think many of us had received an email from a father that was really complimenting her on her focus on building relationships among her students, building relationships with her students, really working in concert with parents to make sure that they are partnering for student success, even in situations where there might be some challenging parent communication for various reasons. And so I went by to Ms. Carol Lee Webb and interrupted the second graders going into the third grade classroom to learn all about what is so super cool about third grade, because they're getting ready to move up. And so I actually got to have the third grade class and the second grade class there, and Ms. Webb was so incredibly appreciative of the recognition, so congratulations to her. Left there and went to Memes Elementary, where I had the opportunity to recognize Ms. Tammy Madison, who is one of our ESE teachers, our pre-K ESE teachers at Memes Elementary, and has been working in that area for several, several years, and she just really is a rock star with her students. That was generated from a letter from a parent as well, who commented that her child coming into the class was absolutely non-verbal. They utilized sign language, and that was the way that they kind of started working through things. But Ms. Madison, and of course, the other support staff that she works with, have really gone above and beyond to come up with creative solutions to really help this child move forward and find success, and they are heartbreaking that they will be leaving Ms. Tammy the end of this year to move on to another classroom, but he's shown such promise. So congratulations to all of them. Also wanted to give a quick shout-out. We've had lots of conversations about the value and importance of school resource officers in our district, and two weeks ago, I guess, we had a tragedy in my community, the North End, what is it, South Jacksonville that some of you all call the North End of the county? But we had a tragedy in our community, and we have a school resource officer that just really went above and beyond, and I've called him and thanked him personally. I don't want to go into an enormous amount of details, but basically what it came down to is this particular school resource officer heard of the situation, was concerned that it may impact his children, meaning the students at his school, and started reaching out and worked through a lot of different channels to make sure that although the students that were impacted by the situation were not at his school, they were students in our schools. And so he really went above and beyond to find all of that information, track down the students, and make sure that they were okay and safe. And I think that is obviously an absolute testament to him as an individual and how much he cares about our students and is committed to making sure that they are doing well. But I think it also is a testament to the value of having school resource officers in our schools and the sense of community that it creates, and our ability to really work together in partnership to make sure that our students are safe, not only when they're on our school campus, but in general. I think that's such an important connection, and so thank you to that deputy and to all of our SROs who work to keep all of our students safe. Obviously, congratulations to all of our graduates and to all of those people that helped them to get there. Had an awesome weekend with Astronaut High School, Space Coast Junior/Senior High School, Titusville High School, and had the opportunity to be here in the boardroom on Saturday morning with Brevard Virtual School, which had their largest graduating class in the history of Brevard Virtual, 33 students. Very nice ceremony if you've not had the opportunity to go there. And then the very last thing that I will say before I pass it on is, I think sometimes we tend to focus on the academics and the things that are going on in our schools and our curriculum and our instruction and all of those very specific things, but in addition to the wonderful outreach from the deputy that I referenced earlier, had another situation recently in our community where some of our students were impacted outside of school. But I am just continually amazed at how our school communities come together to take care of our families regardless of what it is that's impacting our students, and not only just the students, but the families as well, and really just making sure that we are doing everything that we can to take care of them as a whole. I know a lot of people have heard us reference our crisis teams that go out to schools in the event of a crisis, but you know, also just making connections for families and ensuring that they have what it needs, what they need to be successful regardless of the challenge that they're facing. So many thanks to all of you that do the tough jobs of making sure the gates are locked and that students are learning and all of those things, but also thank you to those of you who are dealing with much deeper issues with some of our kiddos and making sure that they're okay. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Mr. Susan.
First off, I want to say thank you to everybody else that's out in the crowd that's either had an impact on me as a teacher and a former instructor or just as a friend of the district. I see Mr. Solomon back there, who is my principal. I drove crazy for a couple of years. I see a couple of individuals, see Owens over there, I used to coach football with, but I really appreciate everything that you guys have done for me in my life, and I just wanted to take a second and say that. Next thing is that I wanted to say, I think I saw Todd from the Viera Company back there, there he is. We have one of the most important agenda items tonight in recent history for Viera. We're going to be taking over the land for the new elementary school, and that's a huge opportunity for us to grow as a community and put another one of our schools on the map, and I really appreciate everything you've been doing with us and working with us throughout the years, Todd. You've been a great partner with all the crazy things that we do with fireworks and everything and parades, but you've been great, and so I wanted to say thank you to that. I did have the, you know, there was a meeting last week with the security specialists to go over some ways to improve, and I did want to send a shout-out to Mr. Novelli for working with them on that and coming together. You talk about security, that's another piece that we've been getting huge, huge compliments for and working on the growth and the improvement in that area. Mr. Novelli, I really appreciate you reaching out to them and working with them. I did get an opportunity also to go to some of those graduations, O'Gallie, Viera, Rockledge, Edgewood. Those were all really cool, and I did want to say, I talked to a school board member over in Hillsborough County, and what they do is they actually have everybody go to the fairgrounds, and they have them go every hour or every two hours, they just have them pump in and out. And I think we in Brevard do it this way, and it is amazing, because every single one of those graduations is different. O'Gallie has the huge American flag, and then you have Edgewood that has all of the body playing bands, and then, you know, Viera's out on the field, and Rockledge is out on the field, I mean, just some amazing things. And what we do is more people-friendly, more towards the students and faculty, and I just, it really shows how much we care. I did want to also say that, a big shout-out to Harbor City and Croton Elementary for their third grade ELA scores. I mean, they knocked it out of the charts. I mean, they moved up on the chart, and it's very hard for some of our Title I schools to do what they do, and for them to step up and do it, it was just phenomenal. I have to give them a shout-out. Those third grade teams are tight. When you go visit those schools and you kind of walk into the staff meeting rooms and stuff like that, they look at you and they kind of go, "Get out of our way, we're trying to do some work here," and that's the reason is they're showing those improvements. I also wanted to say, talk about some of the things that we don't talk about very often is that Viera softball went to regionals and baseball went to regionals. And also, shout-out to O'Gallie in the back room. O'Gallie beat Rockledge to then go to the regional, so huge baseball. When you start talking about multiple teams reaching regional playoffs, that is phenomenal for what we do for athletics. I would argue to say, and I do know that Central Florida, we have more state championships in Central Florida than anywhere else going across the state. If you look at how many we have for football, there's nobody else, all the way through Orange and all the way through, we have more of them. So, and that leads me to another comment. Which one of you guys represents Cocoa? That's you, McDougal, right?
That's me.
Well, there's something called the barbecue bowl that I want to talk to you about. It's Rockledge versus Cocoa, so I want you to start thinking about what we can bet against each other, so who's going to win that game, all right?
All right.
I mean, I'm talking like washing cars.
No gambling, Mr. Susan.
What?
No gambling. No gambling.
It's not gambling. There's no money. Gambling is money. I didn't say money. Did you say money?
You said betting.
I didn't hear money. She's always the rule follower, this one. All right. Anyways, I did want to say thank you. I had an opportunity to also go to Croton and give out awards for Rotary, and that's it. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Campbell.
All right. I think I'm actually going to go backwards and start with tomorrow, because tomorrow in this room, from 3:00 to 5:00, will be the Graduating Senior Job Fair. And I know I've tried to push it out there, I hope you guys will share that too. I believe there's going to be at least 40 companies represented, so if you know a graduating senior who needs a job, and I'm assuming that would be probably for this summer or just for the next coming years, get them here, because I saw companies, like some retail shops, like Bass Pro Shop, but I also saw some other businesses on there long-term, the city of Palm Bay. So encourage your graduating seniors to come. There is a place online at Eventbrite where they can RSVP, but I don't think preregistration is required, but it is encouraged, so hopefully we'll have a big crowd turn out tomorrow. As far as graduations go, you know, it was lots of fun. I only got to go to one because all mine were at the same time, so I had to pick, but that one was really awesome. But I wanted to just highlight one thing that I think we all saw, and that was the students who were committed to going into the military, especially coming off of Memorial Day yesterday. I just, my heart is touched and stirred. I know it's a great opportunity for our students as far as, you know, a job for the next four years and the benefits of, you know, the GI Bill, getting part of your education paid for, but that for your commitment. I mean, they're committing at 18 for the next four years of their lives. This is what they're going to be doing, where they're going to be living, they're not going to have control over where they're going to go and what they're going to do and the uncertainty in the world, who knows? So that commitment means a lot to me, and I just want to thank those students, just like I try every time I see a former or a current member of the military to thank them. I just want to thank our students for making that commitment here on the front end, because I, do you remember the numbers you sent us out across the district, how many have committed? But it's, you know, at Melhite alone, the numbers, you know, were at least three dozen names that were called off, and so just, I'm so thankful for those students. And then, just last Friday, this will be my last one, last Friday, I was able to go on a tour of the air conditioning systems for the Meadow Lane Central Row. Those three schools operate off of one system. It's quite a challenge, and it's been quite a challenge this year, but I just wanted to give my thanks to Dave Salanti, who did the tour. He was so helpful and so knowledgeable and was able to communicate to us, and that included myself, City Councilman Dan Batchelder from the city of West Melbourne, and the three principals. You know, we're not air conditioning techs, but he made it where we could understand it. And thank you, Sue, for sending him. It was, you know, it was, we actually got to walk into the guts of the system. I took some pictures, because I probably won't ever get to go in there again, but it was good to take a look and just to figure out. And I just want our public to know, because air conditioning has been a sensitive topic, and we live in Florida, it's always going to be a sensitive topic, because it's hot. But I do, I was encouraged that our employees are really doing the best they can to try to make sure that our students and our employees are, their needs are being taken care of, and even if it means a really noisy temporary chiller being parked on the backside of Meadow Lane Intermediate, they're doing that so that our students and our teachers can be comfortable, especially during this last month of the year, and then also looking forward to the future solutions, what we're going to have to do for long-term. But I just really appreciate the tour and our maintenance crew for what they do.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Dr. Mullins.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. I want to start by expressing my appreciation to Rolling Readers. I had the opportunity, Mike is the executive director, and was able to participate in a fundraiser called Art and Soul Brevard. It was a wonderful event. It was at the Fussner Art Museum, a fantastic demonstration of artists around our community that have their artwork on display, but also had a great cover band, and they're raising money for Rolling Readers' Writes and Rolling Readers' Draws, bringing together writing and illustration students, and I would encourage all of us to participate next year. I told Mike I'd really put a plug in for it next year, because it was a great event. I had the privilege of spending my morning at Southwest Middle School last Thursday? It was Thursday or Friday? Thursday, I think, with Carrie Friday, who is the media specialist, and she is just an energetic inspiration. She has turned her media center into a hub for the entire school. She collects data on the number of students who are coming in to check out books, how many books they've checked out, how many classrooms have been there. She works with teachers to facilitate hands-on learning. She's made her media center make her space 24/7. It was, I had, we're running shoes to keep up with her that morning, and then on top of that, the culture that she's created in the media center was so positive and so impressive. I had the opportunity to work with a U.S. History class, with Mr. Blake's class, and then also a supported-level class, and the love and the engagement and the inspiration she provided those, our students there, was absolutely phenomenal, so shout-out to Carrie Want to give you some numbers of, we all attended graduations last week. I was fortunate to attend five different graduations, but just to let you know how many we graduated collectively? 5,073 graduates. 2,050 of those students graduated with honors. 434 graduated with their AA or AS degree from Eastern Florida State College. That's a 20% plus increase from last year of 356 students. That is phenomenal. Strong, outstanding. Last year, it's over $4 million in college tuition savings, if I remember correctly, so great job to Eastern Flori... Yeah, let's do that. Thank you. We had over 900 students who earned Bright Futures Scholarship, and like Ms. Campbell, the graduations I went to, first to Mr. Susan's point, the tradition that is represented at our graduations really makes them a very personalized ceremony, so impressive from every graduation I attended. But my heart was filled with the recognition and appreciation for our students who are committing to the military. Every, they stand, we recognize them, and it is so, I'm so proud that our district represents our armed services, all branches, with our students. And then we graduate, our graduating class of 2019 earned over $50 million in scholarships So not to mention the, I'm waiting to get the statistic on the percent of students who graduated with an industry certification. If it's anything like last year, over 40%, so very excited to see the accomplishments of our students. Congratulations to our elementary schools for a district-wide improvement in our grade three ELA scores, improvement of 1%. I want to do a couple personalized shout-outs. First, Darren Bolton and John Belaz in our print shop. Our staff discovered very late last week, one of our high schools, the program that they have printed, it's a customized program, discovered that they had misrepresented or missed a student's name in some of the recognitions, and the school staff worked feverishly to get it corrected, and Darren Bolton and his staff member came in over the weekend, worked, I don't know how many hours or how late in the night and in the morning, but they got the programs reprinted and delivered to Titusville High School so that all of the attendees could have the correct program. Just a valiant effort on the part of our staff and really a representation of what Team BPS is about. So thank you, Darren and John, for your commitment. And finally, I want to share, if you haven't read an article in the Space Coast Daily titled "Cocoa High School Afforded the Outstanding Teachers Opportunities," written by Jordan Rocco, a graduating senior at Cocoa High. And I want to do a shout-out to, I was so impressed with the quality of the writing of this young man, and he gave personal appreciation to one of his English teachers, Ms. Vanessa Skipper. And Ms. Skipper, I want to thank you for your leadership to help our students. This was just a great testimony of your great work with our students and representation of his accomplishment as well and representation of Cocoa High School. So if you haven't read it yet, you need to, it was great, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention graduation myself. I want to thank the teams that put together each of these graduations. I feel like I was a little closer to one particular school this year, because I had my own graduate, and I really saw, and they also have a new principal, and just seeing what goes into all the work and the stress and what they're doing to pull off a graduation for parents and for students to enjoy. So thank you to all our secondary teams that are working hard, not only to get your students to graduation, it seems like there's so much panic and finagling this last couple months of students missing a credit or needing this to graduate, to getting them through and across that finish line, so to thank you to all of them. I also, since the military seems to be a topic, Satellite High had two students recognized on Saturday, one for a Naval Academy appointment and one for Air Force Academy appointment, and those are, military's awesome, but that is like beyond, beyond awesome. And I also attended their award ceremony, and I think that the value of that is somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000. Maybe the naval was even $400,000 by the time they're done with all their training, they're investing in the students, so super impressive. We got news during West Shore's graduation, while we were standing there on the stage, that, you remember the last school board meeting, I told you they were on their way to Monaco for a mousetrap car race. Four students were on their way. They were invited, all expense paid, to compete in this global contest with these mousetrap cars that they designed. While we were there at graduation, we were told that out of 500 teams globally, we had four kids there, two teams, one team placed second in one category and one team placed third in another category. So we, our Brevard Public Schools is on the map in Monaco. I want to give a shout-out to Adrienne Lefard. She is the music teacher at Hoover, and she was presented with one of three Emerging Teacher Awards, so as Ms. Belford mentioned, one of the other teachers. She's a new teacher, she's the band teacher-director, I'm not sure if I've got the terminology right, but we were able to show up in there with the HR team that went in and balloons, and the students were excited, and she was extremely grateful to be recognized. So thank you for all her hard work and dedication to her students. I want to give a shout-out to Kim Donovan. She's the reading coach at Indy Atlantic Elementary School. They had a reading celebration, an end-of-year celebration, students that met certain milestones, and we were out under the pavilion, literally silly stringing and dancing and crazy costumes and hats, and the kids had a fantastic time. And last, Surfside Elementary School ESE team, the Ms. Masterson, the principal there, recognized and put them forward to receive the Bridge Builder pins. And so we have three categories of pins we give out and awards. They're Bridge Builder, Excellence Achiever, and Big Dreamer. Each school board member and Dr. Mullins was given 25 pins at the beginning of the year to award as we saw fit, and I'm happy to say that I am out of Bridge Builder pins, but I'm not out of the other two categories, so it seems like, and I see, as you guys mentioned, it seems like we have a lot of bridge builders within our community, and that was the theme that Dr. Mullins set out for us for this year, and I think that your district is proving to be bridge builders. So quickly, their names of their whole ESE team is Faith Bowman, Mark Singleton, Sue Stocks, Nadine Willett, Joe Lesher, Bree Lawhorn, and Holly Srin. And they, Ms. Masterson just couldn't be more grateful for them. She said they're a cohesive team who's really putting all the supports in place for their students, and she just, she saw their level of services go up tremendously this year with this team. And that concludes the board shout-outs. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Ms. Duskovich and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one presentation, one recognition, 28 consent items, two action items, and three information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. Items A7 on administrative staff recommendations, F11 on meeting minutes, F12 on student expulsions, F19 on reappointment nominations of annual contract teachers for 2019, 2020 school year, F20 on administrative and professional reappointment nominations for 2019, '20, and G40 on purchasing solicitations received revisions. Item C...
Item C9 on general fund balance overview, F16 on District 5 Superintendent's Insurance Advisory Committee Representative, F21 on ratification of the 2018-19 collective bargaining agreement between the school board of Brevard County and the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades, Local 1010, and item F22 on salary increase and enhancements for non-bargaining personnel, 2018-19, our additions.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Please vote, oh, any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Madam Chair, there are 12 persons on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
To approve. Second.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Mr. Susan. Please, any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
At this time, I would like to welcome and congratulate, where is she? Dr. Karen Ivory, there she is. On her reclassif-- yeah. On her reclassification and transfer from the position of principal at Sherwood Elementary School to the position of Director of Elementary Leading and Learning. Congratulations, Dr. Ivory.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, and thank you, Mrs. Klein and Dr. Sullivan, and my new team. And I want to thank my old team and the team that makes it possible, my daughter, my mother, and my old assistant principal, Mrs. McDonough, and Mrs. Ray, who was, I met her as my daughter's kindergarten teacher and she's been one of my biggest cheerleaders. So thank you, and thank you board for giving me this opportunity. And I see my sixth grade teacher in the house, so thank you, Mrs. Spear also.
All right, also. That's not her, like, current sixth grade teacher. That was when she was in sixth grade.
Yes.
Fran Bear. Wow. Who was also teacher union president.
Yes ma'am, yes sir.
And a bunch of other great things. That's why, I just want to clarify. That's all. All right, I also like to congratulate Ms. Teresa Benson on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Principal at Viera High School to the position of Principal at West Melbourne Elementary School for Science.
This is such a great honor. Thank you so much, board, Dr. Mullins, the cabinet staff. Thank you so much. I, to be named the, the principal at West Melbourne Elementary is such an honor. Not only to, because of the School for Science component, the technology component, being able to create those partnerships. I'm so excited. I want to thank my family, first of all, for moving to Brevard County. I'm so grateful. I'm so glad my husband liked the house that I bought through FaceTime. That was so nice. But, but just, just being here and, and being part of this county has been wonderful. I have so many mentors to thank, not only in Broward County, where I was a teacher, Union County, where I was a principal, but here in Brevard County. I have Ms. Finstead at McCullough Elementary. She's my mentor principal. I have Wes Harold at Williams Elementary, where I did a teaching position there. Mike Alba, Sarah Robinson, my admin team at Viera High School. Heather Smith is representing them tonight. I'm so happy that you guys are here, thank you. But, but just being here and being a part of Brevard and knowing that no matter where my life was taken, I was born and raised in Florida. I knew I was going to come back to Florida and I'm so glad that Brevard County is my home. Thanks so much for this honor.
Congratulations are also in order for Ms. Cherie Cochran on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher on assignment at Cambridge Elementary School to the position of Assistant Principal at Apollo Elementary School. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins and members of the school board for this opportunity to serve the students of Apollo as an assistant principal. I couldn't have done this without the support of my family. I've got here tonight my mom and dad, my three children, my sister, who's also a teacher with BPS. She's a resource teacher here at the district. My husband, Brian. Thank you to my current admin team at Cambridge, Dr. Spear and Ms. Teige. Thank you to Mr. O'Leary and I look forward to working with you and Ms. Wise and the Apollo team, and go Eagles.
We want to recognize and congratulate Ms. Jamie Minor on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher on assignment at Kokina Elementary School to the position of Assistant Principal at Kokina Elementary. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Mullins, thank you to the board. I want to start off by thanking everyone that's here with me tonight, my boyfriend, Chris, and one of my best friends, Michelle. They have been my cheerleaders and my supporters along this journey. To my principal, Blair Lovelace, and to my assistant principal, who sadly we're losing, Kim Harris. They have been amazing. They have thrown everything at me that they could possibly think of to get me ready for this. And I can't thank you enough for that learning opportunity and allowing me to grow each and every day. Thank you to Ms. Sylvester and Ms. Klein for believing in me. I am absolutely honored to be the Assistant Principal at Kokina Elementary School. And thank you to Dr. John Harris for encouraging me to come over to Brevard County and being an amazing mentor. Thank you so much.
All right, next we congratulate Ms. Erica Back on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher on assignment at Fair Glenn Elementary School to the position of Assistant Principal at Dr. W.J. Creole Elementary.
Thank you. I consider it an honor and privilege to be here tonight. The appointment of Assistant Principal is something that I don't take lightly. I'm fully committed to seeing students succeed and I'm excited about working with a team that's passionate about it. I have had an amazing team that has been with me along the way. My husband's my rock. I have parents who are unconditional, unconditionally supportive along the way. My children who have put up with me not cooking dinners and things of that sort, and understanding and being patient. And just my whole entire family, that's on the home front. As far as work is concerned, I've had amazing leaders over the years who have truly pushed me to where I am today. It starts from Jane Klein, who pushed me many years ago when I was a bookkeeper, to follow my dream and my passion of being a teacher. And then from being a teacher, I've had leaders like Blair Lovelace, Angela Owens, Catherine Murphy, Amy Delago, who have pushed me, Stephanie Hall, to be where I am today. My poor current admin team has put up with me asking endless questions, has truly supported me when I maybe have doubted myself. And then I'm extremely excited for my new admin team, who is willing to give me the chance to lead and guide alongside of them. And I couldn't be more happier and proud. And thank you board for appointing me this evening.
Congratulations to Melanie Nelson on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Guidance Services Professional at Kennedy Middle School to the position of Assistant Principal at Pinewood Elementary. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you to the board and thank you, Dr. Mullins, for the opportunity. I want to thank Jane Klein for hiring me 14 years ago when I came to Brevard County. I want to thank Ms. Tomlinson, my current administration, for her guidance this year, along with several others in this room. And I thank my kids for being patient with me, Briel and Bryce, as I've ventured out on this journey, so. And thank you to Ms. Robinson for giving me the opportunity. I'm super excited to serve the Panther community.
Congratulations to Nicholas Stewart on his reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Space Coast Junior Senior High to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at Edgewood Junior Senior High. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, thank you to the board. I appreciate the opportunity. Big thank you to Ms. Ingrada for believing in me. I'm super excited to hit the ground running at Edgewood. Big thank you to Ms. Majescovic, who has guided me over the last couple of years and given me lots of professional growth opportunities, PGOs as we call them. So thank you, and a huge thank you to my support here, my lovely wife, Katie, and my two angels, Avery and Olivia.
All right, congratulations to Mr. John Roche on his reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at O'Gally High to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at O'Gally High School. Go Commodores.
Go Commodores. Thank you, board, thank you, Dr. Mullins. Want to thank Dr. Sullivan for hiring me in Brevard County. And then thank you to Ms. Vega for giving me the opportunity and also for Mr. Solomon to let me continue in Brevard Public Schools to the next step. Thank you.
We also want to congratulate Ms. Angela Owens on her reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Merritt Island High to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at Palm Bay High.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins and school board. It is definitely an honor to be able to serve Brevard County Public Schools. To my husband, who does it all behind the scenes, he's been my rock through it all and he's made many sacrifices so that I can continue upon my educational leadership journey. To my former principals, and there's a few of you in here today, to the elementary and secondary directors, and to Ms. Klein and Dr. Sullivan, thank you for everything you've put in place for me to be where I am today. You guys have inspired me, you guys have guided me and taught me all the great aspects of a leader. To Mr. Raymer, it's been one great year together. It's sad at the same time, but you have believed in me and you have given me so many opportunities to grow as an educational leader and for that I'm so thankful. Finally, to Mr. Kaminski, I am very excited for this opportunity and to be able to serve alongside your administrative team. And I look forward to serving the community, the parents and the faculty, and of course, the students at Palm Bay Magnet High School. Thank you.
And last, but not certainly not least, congratulations to Jamie Russell on his reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Astronaut High to the position of 12-month Assistant Principal at Astronaut High School.
I'd like to first also thank Dr. Mullins and the board for the opportunity. I'd like to also thank Mr. Novelli, Dr. Sullivan, and Mrs. Bowman for being my mentor, for helping me for the last four years in the position I am and to, to just, you know, be there for me when I needed you guys to be. And thank you very much. Also want to thank my principal, current and going to be continuing, Mrs. Miller, for pushing me, for helping me be the leader that I continue to be and hopefully to continue to push me and be who I need to be. Lastly, I want to thank my wife, who's out there with my four little children. We've had a, we've had a fun, a fun ride, but, you know, she's, she's there and, you know, she's, I couldn't do it without her and thank you very much. And I just look forward to the opportunity, thank you.
I'll just note that there was no shortage of PGO-ing out there, professional growth opportunities. So good job, principals, way to give them opportunities and keep delegating.
Ms. Duskovich? Yes, Ms. Belford? May I take just one second? I just want to point out, while, while Jamie Russell did give his wife due appreciation, and I'm, and I'm sure that she appreciates that, his wife, Jamie Russell, also happens to be a member of the Pinewood team. So not only is she like rock star wife, supporting him and his growth in the district, and two twins, new twins, how old are they now?
Two and a half, two and a half months.
Better get it right.
Two and a half month old twins and, and a firecracker member of the Pinewood team. So thank you both to all that your family does for the district. Thank you, Ms. Belford. And I'd just add, that's quite a large amount of new administrators and administrators that have moved into new positions. And we know the value of good leadership. So we're expecting and hoping and supporting and planning on you setting a good tone in your schools and, and supporting our staff, our teachers and our students. We're depending on you. So thank you all very much. We are now time, it's now time to move on to our recognition portion of our meeting, Dr. Mullins.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. I'd like to welcome Ms. Marcia Booth, founder and president of Recycle Brevard, who will be making a presentation to Robert Louis Stevenson Elementary School for being selected to receive the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast Recycling Award. Ms. Booth?
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Well, today I'm representing the League of Women Voters. I'm coordinator of the recycling awards for the league. And the league is honored to be here and offering and having the opportunity to once again present this, the award at the school board meeting, to recognize the school and efforts of our schools here. Thank you to Charles McInmahan and Joseph Montemorno, Bruce Lindsay and Sue Han for the support this year's award. So just to give you a little history of the award. So it started in 1997. And the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast Recycling Awards, in cooperation with Brevard Public Schools, has, has presented Brevard Schools with a challenge. Have students come up with ways to improve recycling practices and educate others on the importance of recycling. With the goal of encouraging reflection and further action about recycling efforts, the award program recognizes schools whose projects best represent their knowledge and experience with recycling. Three volunteer judges helped select this year's award recipient from Brevard County Solid Waste Management Department. It was Andrea Bolifo from Brevard Public Schools with Joseph Montemorno. And from our league, it was Fran Bear. Thank you for all the help. I would like to also thank the schools that participated in the program this year. We had five applications and three submissions in the end. We very much appreciate your efforts in learning and practicing recycling and your participation in our program. So now I would like to invite our current president, Ms. Jack Lee Chandler, chairperson, Duskovich, and superintendent, Dr. Mullins, to join me to present the award. So the elementary school selected to receive the award this year was Stevenson Elementary. Principal, Ms. Mar. Principal Cornell, project leader, Ms. Rivera. Great, the class of, a sixth grade class. They planned the whole project and it was a very involved project. They had a skit, a video, they filmed, they did a project, a fundraiser and, you know, it was some research and survey in the school. So it was a very impressive project. So, and the project was titled, "The Great Garbage Project."
Oh, yay.
Ms. Duskovich, if I may, since we have Stevenson Elementary School in the house. I missed this earlier. So Mr. Cornell received word on Saturday that their fourth grade Odyssey of the Mind team, the youngest students to compete at world championship, received their rating placing them at 18th in the world against over 60-- placing them at 18th in the world against over 60 other countries competing at world championships. Congrat-
Woo!
So, we talked about Brevard being represented across the world, and that's true through Odyssey of the Mind as well. Great job, Stevenson. Very proud of you.
Fantastic. Young lady, are you part of the Odyssey of the Mind Team? Congratulations. It's a big accomplishment. Where was it held this year?
Michigan.
In Michigan. Did you have a good trip? That's wonderful.
I think you should go take a picture with her.
They raised $10,000 in less than three weeks.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
Where did Mike go? Mike, are you back? Are you behind the curtain? No, not, Mike, there you go. Come back out with your camera. Let's at least get the school represented for another picture. Mr. Cornell, Dr. Cornell, come on back up here.
School Board Meeting going home.
Why is he crying?
He didn't get a picture. I bet you that's it.
The little one's crying.
Probably. I bet you that's it.
Okay, we are on to the presentation portion of our meeting. I have asked Ms. Zirker, Dr. Mullins, and Ms. Zirker to prepare an explanation about our general fund balance, a little bit more of a breakdown overview. So, Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Zirker, Chief Financial Officer, is here to provide us with the general fund balance overview. Ms. Zirker?
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Good evening, Board. As stated at the request of the superintendent, this presentation is to provide information regarding the 2017-18 ending fund balance. Fund balance is a non-recurring funds that are the result of an accounting equation. Takes the revenues net of expenditures added to the beginning fund balance. And beginning fund balance is the ending fund balance from the previous year. Fund balance is made up of non-recurring dollars. While it may fluctuate by the net difference of revenues and expenditures, and the mix may fluctuate, once they are spent, they are gone. Our current for 1718, our percent of total revenues to fund balance was 10.66%. Fund balance reporting for financial statements is governed by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, commonly known as GASB, Statement Number 54, Fund Balance Reporting and Governmental Fund Types. Per the standard, we are required to report our fund balances as non-spendable, inventories and prepaid's, restricted, which are funds that have external restrictions on the usage, committed, which are funds that the Board through action restricts their uses or commits their uses to a specific item, assigned, which are funds that are planned to be used for a specific purpose, and unassigned are all line items within the fund balance that do not fit into the other four category. In addition, the Department of Education measures the financial stability of school districts with the financial condition ratio. There is penalties according to Florida statute 1011.051, Guidelines for General Funds, if the fund balance dips below 3%. Across the state, per the DOE information, the financial condition ratios range from 0% to 22.65%, with a median of 8.15% statewide. The sum of the assigned and unassigned fund balance divided by total revenues equals the financial condition ratio. For Brevard County Schools, it is 8.26% as of the end of fiscal year 1718. Taking a look for transparency's sake and desire at a line item breakout of the budget, we see the different items that actually get put into fund balance. In preparing for this presentation, it came to our attention that in a previous presentation, encumbrances had been slightly overstated, and the carryforwards included reserves. Tonight, we're going to work with the correct breakout of the total fund balance. Starting with inventory on hand, we are going to look at each item individually and provide explanation of what makes that up. Inventory on hand is an accounting of consumable supplies and repair parts. The warehouse maintains consumable supplies for use by schools and departments. Some examples of what they hold are paper goods, markers, and binders. Facilities and maintenance maintains a supply of construction and repair parts. Some of those would be plumbing materials, electrical supplies, spools of wire, refrigerants and antifreeze, cabinetry materials, et cetera. And lastly, the transportation department maintains a supply of bus and vehicle repair parts, include engine parts, batteries, tires, headlights, taillights, bus paint, oil, lubricants, et cetera. These are all items on hand and would be expensed as used. Moving on to prepaid expenses. Within our prepaid expenses is our property and general liability insurance premium. The annual insurance premium is due April 1st. The contract runs from April 1 through March 31st. According to generally accepted accounting principles, a portion of that premium should be recognized in the current year for months, April through June. A portion for the next fiscal year, July through March, are placed on the balance sheet as a prepaid asset, and then a portion of fund balance is recognized as the prepaid asset. This is a holding place for the payment of monthly PNG insurance premium, and that monthly premium is $396,000. This line item will be fully, was fully expended at the end of March. Moving to state categoricals. This is funding through the state that is not discretionary, but mandated by the state on how these funds must be spent. All of these funds are spent in support of our schools. Some of the examples that are included in state categoricals include the mental health allocation, safe schools, schools of hope, reading allocation, DJJ supplemental allocation, instructional materials, teacher classroom supply assistance, digital classroom allocation, school recognition, adult education or workforce, and our voluntary pre-K program. These are externally required by the state on how we must spend them. Moving to the committed fund balance, began in fiscal year 1718, recommended by the superintendent and approved by the Board to take non-recurring dollars totaling almost $5.9 million, and pay for 16 instructional coaches, seven social workers, school security resource officers, centralized internal accounts, and athletic assistants over three years, 1718, 1819, 1920. At the end of 1718, there was $3.9 million still in committed. 1.9 of that, or approximately half of it, will be paid, used in the 1819 year to cover these expenses. The remainder will be used in the 1920 year. Moving to encumbrances, these are open purchase orders for goods and services that were still outstanding as of June 30, 2018. Some of the purchase orders that were included in this listing is supplies, computer hardware, subscription fees for software, furniture, fixture, and equipment, specialized services of contractors that provide maintenance for our facilities, remodel and renovation contracts, oil and grease purchases, tire and tubes, and bank charges. Carryforwards are remaining balances and accounts that can carry forward into the new fiscal year. Some examples include, but are not limited to, adult ed, advanced placement, ACE program, art education, AVID, CAPE, DJJ, driver's ed, elementary math program, facility use fees collected at the school, gifted, Hennecker Arts, international baccalaureate program, lacrosse, legacy club, positive behavior, school advisory council, science education, Slossberg funds, and suicide prevention. Looking at the reserve for medical insurance, this was a reserve that was set up as part of fiscal year 2015-16 budget reductions. It was presented at a School Board workshop by Dr. Bingley on March 31, 2015. This reserve annually creates a $3.1 million reserve out of lapsed general funds. When I first came to the district and was looking at this, there was some initial misunderstanding on my part that this reserve was set aside in case we got in trouble on the Health Insurance Trust Fund. Budget staff has clarified for me and provided copies of the presentation by Dr. Bingley that this was actually created to avoid having to budget for a premium increase in the Health Insurance Trust Fund in 2015-16. The reserve pays a portion of the health insurance premium for the next year. School operations, these are funds remaining specifically identified for school operations. They do include school-specific savings accounts for special projects, marquees, playgrounds, shade covers, and security cameras. In addition, it covers classroom technology, custodial supplies, furniture fixture and equipment, and instructional materials or library books, among other items. The state-required contingency is a board-directed item from fiscal year 2007-8 and established by the Board at that time. It is a fixed amount that was set at that time, and the purpose was to ensure that fund balance would never fall below the 3%. With the amount being fixed, however, the percent does decrease as total revenues increase over time. We can see at the beginning of 1819 or end of 1718, the $19,880,369 was 3.6% of total Non-recurring funds, these are non-recurring lapsed funds that fell out at the end of the year of 1718, and they were intended at the time to provide bonuses to employees in the 1819 school year. The FEFP reserve is funds that have been set aside initially at a higher amount over the years and reduced as calculations of the Florida Education Finance Program have caused losses of revenue. The district receives five calculations throughout the year. The first two are based on projected student enrollment. calculation three is done after the October student survey, and adjustments are typically made downward for the difference between actuals and projected. calculation four occurs after the February student survey. In many cases, we do gain some back, but not completely what we lost. In the current fiscal year 1819, the third calc, we lost $1.7 million in the funding. We anticipate about half of that to be coming back from the fourth calculation. The fifth calculation occurs in late summer and gives us the final counts and proration from the state. And lastly is miscellaneous reserves. These are an amount of non-recurring lapsed dollars that are set aside to be able to handle unforeseen or higher-than-expected expenditures. Two examples of this for this year was our SAT testing for all of 100% of the juniors across the district. That came in higher than expected by about $100,000. The second was dual enrollment textbooks. The costs were much greater than the money that had been allocated, and those funds were taken out from this miscellaneous revenue. Anyone wishing to gain additional information on fund balance, I would direct them to the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report on the district's website at the link provided. Our CAFR, which they're commonly called, are audited by Moore, Stevens, and Lovelace annually, and the audit report for that can be found in the CAFR on page one. Additional information on fund balance is available in the balance sheet on page 20, the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance on page 24, and the footnote to the financial statements number 20, fund balance reporting, page 79. I also welcome anyone reaching out to my office for additional information. We'd be happy to share any of the details that are behind the numbers presented tonight. And that concludes my presentation to the Board.
Thank you, Ms. Zirker. If anybody has any follow-up questions, please contact Ms. Zirker, make an appointment with her, and go through the presentation with her. We are now on to the public comments portion of our meeting. The School Board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes, the portion of the meeting during which public is invited to participate. The policy further provides that the time limit may be extended. We have three public speakers tonight. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the Board Chairman. The Chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directive, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the Chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching at home. Let's begin with our speakers. We have Anthony Calucci, Ronald Bradley, and Vanessa Skipper. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, and the topic that you will be discussing. Mr. Calucci?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Bradley.
Mr. Bradley. Sorry, Mr. Calucci, you can go second. Is that okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Bradley.
Well, he might want to hear what I hear too, so, anyway. I am here to talk to you about some things that's really on my heart. I think they're spending a lot of money on a lot of things that don't need to be spent. I started in air conditioning in 1962. Some of you weren't even born. I worked on equipment that you never heard of. When you go to buy equipment for the school system, it's not first cost, it's how long it lasts. You've got schools around here that you got a 100-acre school, some of the air conditioning equipment you buy, you can't set it by the school. You've got to set it out in the pasture and pipe the chill water from one school across a turnip patch to the other school. Now, that don't sound very economical to me. If one school goes down, if one unit goes down, you've got two schools go down. If you've got three schools and got a chill package on the system, you've got three schools down. Now, if that makes sense, I don't know. I worked on, in four different school systems, and it's all basically the same. First cost. I'm going to find some more information out, but when you've got a control system and got three or four different systems on, and they won't interface, then you've got a problem. You've got to go out of one and get in another one. Go out of this and get in another. Then you bid on a job, the guy lowballs you, he gets the equipment in. After it's over with, you don't have anybody to work on it. Now, that don't sound very economical to me. If one school goes down, if one unit goes down, you've got two schools going down. If you've got three schools and got a chill package on the system, you've got three schools down. Now, if that makes sense, I don't know. I've worked on, in four different school systems, and it's all basically the same. First cost. Some, I'm going to find some more information out, but when you've got a control system and got three or four different systems on, and they won't interface, then you've got a problem. You've got to go out of one and get in another one. Go out of this and get in another. Then you bid on the job, the guy lowballs you, he gets the equipment in. After it's over with, you don't have anybody to work on it. You don't have any people in-house that can do the work. But you could spend thousands of dollars having people come in and do the job that you get in-house. Now, another thing I'd like to say, everybody here tonight, thank everybody for what they do. When you get to a school system where you do more mentoring and less paperwork, you have a far better school system. I'll tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I'm requesting that you review the facts presented by the special magistrate, a magistrate who has ruled on at least 40 cases and was one of your high-paid council's top choices. So let's examine what magistrate young concluded. The state requires a fund balance of 3%. The board policy requires a minimum of 3.5%. The district fund balance has consistently been 5% above these required minimums. It is most respectfully submitted that this conservative fiscal strategy described above results in the underutilization of funds generated at the state, federal, and local level, funds that are intended to be applied toward the education of children. The record establishes an unbroken pattern of conservative fiscal strategy to maintain each year a fund balance of between 8.23% to the current projected 9.68%. It is submitted that this practice results in funds that are no longer nonrecurring. As the result of the district's conservative budgeting practices, these nonrecurring funds recur each year. It is respectfully submitted that the evidence of record does not support the conclusion that funding the BFT proposal would jeopardize the district's long-term financial stability. It is concluded that there are sufficient funds available to fund the BFT final proposal. With teacher shortages afflicting school districts statewide and nationwide, the labor market for teachers is a seller's market. It seems axiomatic that the Brevard County School District would seem to put itself in a more favorable competitive position to attract and retain quality teachers, and that this would be in the best interest of children and the public it serves. It is concluded further that funding the BFT proposal will have a positive impact on the interest and welfare of the children. At the outset of this discussion, it is respectfully observed that there are always funds available to provide for increases such as the ones proposed by BFT. It is a question of priorities, of choices. The superintendent recommends a budget that is full of choices, and the school board reviews the recommendation and adopts a budget. The budget is a living document capable of being amended during the fiscal year as circumstances and priorities change. I just handed you 6,129 signatures on a petition called "Brevard Public Schools Accept the Special Magistrate's Recommendation." These people and so many others believe you must prioritize Brevard County teachers' pay. Enough is enough. The facts from a neutral party tell you what the right thing to do is. End this right now and accept the special magistrate's decision. It's past time to fix this blight on our community.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Ms. Skipper.
Good evening, Dr. Mullins, members of the board. Chapter seven of Bill Strickland's Make the Impossible Possible focuses on the power of passion. He says passion isn't blunted by defeat. It isn't tamed by common sense or conventional expectations. He was able to find an unconventional way to finance his flight hours so that he could achieve his dream of being a commercial pilot. On its face, funding a raise with nonrecurring dollars isn't conventional. I'm sure you've heard people say that's just not common sense. But as I've said before, I do truly believe that you chose to run for office because you are passionate about education. Every single one of you campaigned on wanting to significantly improve teacher salary. Teachers' working conditions are students' learning conditions. Now is your chance to not allow yourself to be blunted by defeat or tamed by common sense or conventional expectations. There will be people who tell you not to dip into reserves for a reoccurring raise. It's common sense. It's a conventional expectation that you wouldn't do that. But what you're not being told is that while you might have to dip the first year, and a little less by the second year, by the third year, this raise that a third-party, neutral, special magistrate agreed that should be paid will no longer be reoccurring due to the simple concept of attrition. Using data obtained through public record requests, it was learned that the district was not experiencing the actual cost of the raise given. I want to thank you for taking the time to speak with us and regularly asking questions about the magistrate's decision. I want dedicated teachers to stay in this county. As I mentioned in my email to you all last week, I implore you, for students like Javier, whose note I sent you, and Rocco, who wrote an amazing piece about Coca-Hive for Space Coast Daily, deserve to have a caring, experienced educator, for my son, for your children, who deserve to have a teacher that is 100% invested in his or her classroom and not exhausted from working two and three side jobs to make ends meet, and for all the students in Brevard who by our own mission, we seek to serve with excellence as a standard, to accept the magistrate's decision. There is a line from the decision that is on autoplay in my head. It is most respectfully submitted that this conservative fiscal strategy described above results in the underutilization of funds generated at the federal, state, and local level, funds that are intended to be applied toward the education of children. Teachers' working conditions are our students' learning conditions. And as I have mentioned several times before, I don't want my child, nor then I can imagine any other parent in this county sitting in an algebra class without a teacher all year, or sitting in a biology class without a teacher all year because they have left to teach something, somewhere else, or they have left for another profession. We have the chance to do something really right here. Let's do it.
Thank you. That concludes our public speakers. Does anyone have any comments before we move on? Ms. Belford.
Just a quick comment. I think I have been, to some extent, a thorn in Mr. Calucci's side because all weekend long I was emailing and texting, asking, can you please send me this? Can you please see me this? Because you guys know I like digging into data. And he has been wonderful about getting back with me even, even throughout the weekend when I was digging through it all, and I know that he was out doing things with his, his daughter. Congratulations on her, on her big dance wins, Anthony. But I do appreciate your willingness to, to work to get that information to me, especially as quickly as you did. So thank you, and I'll try not to be too much of a pest.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Anyone else have any comments? That concludes the public comment portion of our meeting. We are thankful for everyone that takes their time to, to come and speak to us. Move us on to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are 28 agenda items under this category, two with prior information. Prior to the vote, with the board's permission, Ms. Duskovich, I would like to ask Ms. Debbie Greco, the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades Local 10-10 Business Representative, to provide us the results of the recent local 10-10 vote. Ms. Greco?
Thank you. My name is Deborah Greco. I am the business representative for the soon-under-to-be-forgotten, quickly forgotten support staff that worked for Brevard County. We had 3,250 eligible voters in the bargaining unit. This year, we did a little bit better than last year. We had a 19.5% turnout, which is really kind of shocking to me because I was up here in the afternoon, and we probably had one-third of the people that work in this building, I guess, willing to walk to the front of the, of the lobby to vote, which seems to be what happens everywhere. One year, we had the voting at every location, and we still didn't get above the 15% turnout. So I don't know what to do to make it any better. Perhaps I should get in my car and drive and personally carry the ballot box around to every support staff person to see if they're interested enough, you know, to, to vote. It just amazes me that 85% of the people let allow 15% to make the decisions for them. We even had, my admin assistant, Ms. Barney, had personally visited 21 facilities in the North Area, going around personally, explaining to support staff, and especially food service folks, what was being voted on in the contract. We emailed everyone. Mr. Morton in HR worked with us to get things out to each individual site and asked that the principals or the supervisors on duty to put the, put the information out so all of the support staff could review it. It's just people just, I don't know if it's because for so many years they haven't gotten anything, that they're just so, you know, they just don't care anymore. I don't know what it is. But if anybody has an idea of how to, how to get a vote out of every person, could you please call me and let me know? Because frankly, it's a lot of work to have such a poor turnout. Granted, we do have some folks that continually work against us, so, you know, I don't know what else to do. Except maybe just retire and let somebody else do it.
Her name's Pollyanna.
Anyway, we had, out of this, out of the 630 people that voted, overwhelmingly, we had a yes vote, 583 yes votes, 47 no votes, and zero voted, voided votes. So we ask that you please consider approving the contract as it was ratified by its employees. And please, let's get rolling on to let it go to payroll so folks can get the money before they get out of school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Greco. I believe if we approve it tonight, Ms. Cirker, can you, or maybe even Dr. Mullins, can you confirm when that'll go into the paychecks?
I believe, Ms. Cirker, if it's approved tonight, the bonus and the impact or the effect of the recurring will go in June 15, and the retro would be distributed on June 30.
Thank you. Just so those watching can, can know when to expect it. Does any board member wish to pull any of the consent agenda items? What are the wishes of the board?
To approve.
Second.
Did somebody first it?
I did, I'm sorry. I was very thrilled.
I forget to use the microphone all the time.
Motion by Ms. McDougal, second by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Greco. We will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins.
First, first is item G39 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion?
Mr. Susan, were you really excited about making that vote, or were you just trying to get a vote in there so you didn't get left out?
I mean, you guys are animals.
Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
Next is item G40 on purchasing solicitations. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. We will now move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and we brought back for action at the next meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Mullins.
There are, there are three items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss any of these items? We are now at board member reports. Does anyone have anything to add? Dr. Mullins, do you have anything to report?
Ms. Duskovich, and members of the board, I missed the opportunity earlier this evening when we were recognizing and acknowledging our students who went into the military. And I'm going to go out on a limb here. Chris Moore, I know you don't like it when I hit you with numbers. Do you remember how many students we have in ROTC?
Oh, I know that.
It's a lot. It's thousands of students that we have in our ROTC programs across the district. I, I love meeting the command, the commanders that lead our ROTC. The mentorship they provide our kids is top-notch without exception. One of the, and I'll give acknowledgement to Dr. Sullivan, she presented a proposal to the, ultimately that we have forwarded to the state that would request their consideration to add a series of ROTC courses that a student accumulates because they also sit for the ASVAB, which allows them to potentially advance in rank if they do go into the military as a consideration of the acceleration. I'm not going to get that right. College and career readiness, school-grade component, because right now, the state does not acknowledge and recognize that. So we're working. Thank you to Dr. Sullivan. I've, it's already been forwarded to Jacob Aliva, Deputy Chancellor, and they are reviewing it. So we're hopeful that that will be in the future, but it's just one more piece of acknowledging and recognizing our military, our potential military-bound students.
And Dr. Mullins, officially, it's 2,343.
2,343 students currently this year.
That's fantastic, and I really hope we see some progress with that. It's important. All right. Please note, the next school board meeting is June 25, 2019, and we will convene at 9:30 a.m. for our summer meetings. This meeting is now adjourned.